Is conditioned upon proceeding with, and here comes this word again, guys, you see it all over the place in land use law, right? Reasonable diligence. So my recommendation to local agencies is to have some language in there that allows for staff and administration as they're going through this to be able to point to something so that reasonable then isn't left up to the interpretation of just the individual looking at it. Because someone might say, well, reasonable diligence, do you know how long it takes to deal with these kind of things? Four years is completely reasonable, right? And yet you may have someone else that looks at that and goes, six months is reasonable for this type of activity or action. So it's it's my recommendation that you guys have good directives and and something in writing that can give that good direction to make sure that that reasonable then has something behind it. Otherwise, it can end up being what's reasonable to one is not reasonable to another. But the way that the courts are going to look at that in in all honesty is going to end up being situation specific unless there is something in writing that says, no, they actually define reasonable diligence on moving forward with the project to be this type of timeline here. So if you, i- if it's determined that they were not proceeding with regional reasonable diligence on something, then an agency then does have the right to say you have lost your vesting rights. So they have the ability to do that. But like everything else, the onus goes on to the local agency to say why you're losing those vesting rights.
Just an example, Trent's got a vested project.
How come you just choose me?
But he's like, I want to go to Egypt on a trip and I don't, I'm gonna go retire over there. I want to sell my, my plot of ground and my vested project.
Yeah.
So I, I buy that from him. Does that carry, is that vestiture transferable?
They vested, so vested rights can be transferable, but they would, the law does not consider them to be automatically transferable. What I mean by that is if property changes hands and the new property owner is either unaware of something or does not have any communication with the local agency, then there has been court cases where they have looked at that before and and said that the local agency is within their right to determine that there wasn't reasonable diligence for you to move forward on something because there wasn't even communication about, you know, a property changing hands and things of that nature. So best practice, of course, is is if someone's buying a property and there's any vesting on that property, that they're going to make sure that they, that the local agency understands, I still intend to move forward with this item. And that can allow for a transference of 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 vesting rights. But by by default, they would, they do not have to transfer. But there's been cases on both sides that have said, no.
Lots of people come and become vested or try to get a conditional use or whatever the vest, you know, in order so they know that, yeah, I want to purchase the property. I have, I'm at, you know, I have
Sure.
A document saying I have a right to if.
Yeah, yep. Have a development agreement or something in place dating, yeah.
Everything kind of goes back to loves. Funny.
Because they have their application and we changed the name. And so they were vested.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, could they sell the development to another trust spot? And still have that same vestiture. Plain language, all of it, whole thing.
Yep.
That doesn't seem to matter though.
Yep. No, because then regardless of all the policies and everything that you have in place, then there's the politics of everything, right? And those, those two typically don't play well together.
Did you say you had a general plan section? Couple of slides in here?
Um, not on general plans, we covered that one in in the beginning. I can show you the other ones that we that we have. I think the zone change is the last one there. Yeah. And then we just call this like our jeopardy board, but some of the the other ones that we get asked on variances is pretty common, simply because this to me is very similar to members of the public not having that understanding between legislative and administrative. Most people that have worked at a planning counter for a local agency can tell you that when they have to tell someone, no, I'm sorry, you can't do that with your property. Nine times out of 10, the very first thing out of their mouth is, well, give me a variance then, which is like, well, just let me allow, allow me to do something I'm not supposed to do. And variances should, there's five criteria that they actually should be meeting. And if you as a local agency are approving variances without going through that five criteria, you're undermining your own code every single time. And you're you're weakening the the code there and unfortunately putting your agency in a position where if somebody were to come in and challenge something, you're providing them more and more evidence on the backside of these guys are not being consistent. And then, yeah, it causes problems there.
Fortunately, we haven't done any of those.
That's good. Yeah, they they really should be fairly uncommon, honestly. Exactions is another one that we'll, we'll end up getting a decent amount of questions on, but that's usually for faster growing communities. And oftentimes what's referred to as the pioneering problem, right? Like who's putting this very expensive infrastructure into the ground and how is it being funded? You know, and they call it the pioneering problem because oftentimes the first person that comes in feels as though they're the one that's being told you're responsible to put all of these improvements in and then everybody else is going to benefit from it. So how do you, how do you balance those items? Yeah, I mean, and it depends because it's not uncommon oftentimes in in faster growing communities for somebody to come in and say, well, unfortunately, even this pipe, this sewer pipe that's, you know, leading up to your property, if you're going to subdivide and add all these projects in now, that pipe now has to be increased in size. But they're not going to do a, you, uh, local agencies typically are not going to say, you just are going to increase it to just what your demand is. They're going to say, and you develop, now the next guy's going to want to develop, the next guy's going to want to develop. So the master plan of that area says that that pipe needs to be, you know, six inches, right? It's currently a two inch pipe, it needs to be six inches, but you can only require that developer to actually be responsible for whatever the additional capacity is to serve their project. So if that went from say a two to a three inch line, but your master plan says we need a six inch line, then how do you have those discussions with that developer about working with them to place a six inch line? While they're only putting in the amount of dollars that that are fair and comparable to what their impact would be. So how is the community dealing with the, the, you know, the overage there? So oftentimes that ends up just being that that pioneering problem, the discussions that you have there. Development agreements, we'll get a lot of questions on, especially for agencies that are seeing again a lot of growth, the CUPs. Conditional use permits are really interesting in the fact that you're seeing almost two areas of thought throughout the state. You're seeing a lot of agencies that are pulling back on how many conditional use permits they have, simply because of the kind of overt political nature that they feel that each one of them can be. And they're just simply putting more things into allowed by right and then prohibited. But then you're seeing some agencies that are actually expanding their conditional use permit list. And so it it it's really up to each individual agency, how you want to be able to take a look at at your items and what type of flexibility you want to be able to see there. I say with a, with a lot of agencies, when they're considering anything, it's, it's, it sounds kind of bad to say, and I don't mean it bad, I just mean like be mindful, but the, be careful what you wish for, right? Because every change, any type of impact that you're going to do, it's always going to have intended and unintended consequences. So just be aware. Yeah.
So I like the conditional use permits. And I look at them this way, so just tell me I'm wrong, because everybody tells me I'm wrong. But for the most part, I mean, they are permitted.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a permitted use.
That is correct.
With reasonable condition.
Oftentimes, I think that members of the public and many, even a lot of planners, look at that the other way around.
It is not permitted.
Yeah. It's not permitted unless is how a lot of people view it, but conditional use permits are actually, no, they are permitted, but there is additional items that need to be addressed to mitigate certain impacts to a certain degree. But they are permitted uses with these conditions placed on them to mitigate.
That's just how I literally, I try to look at them here.
Well, I can't tell you're wrong because you're, you're, you're right.
Nice. That'd be the first time. What's your name again?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Speaking of the microphone.
No, okay.
Yeah, a common misconception with conditional use permits, honestly. But it's very important for people to understand the way that the law looks at it is that is a permitted use with certain areas that need to be mitigated to a reasonable degree. We're getting back to the reasonable item again. It does not mean that something has to be mitigated completely, right? And oftentimes you're going to see that with things like noise or light or things of that nature. A development may not, you may not be able to say to somebody, you need to eliminate all light there, period. You can't have any light on that. That's not reasonable, but you could have hooding placed on that light to ensure that it's not going to spill over into adjacent properties more than X percent. You could talk about the hours that that light may be able to be on or off and things of that nature. Things that are then going to be seen as that reasonable mitigation standard.
A lot of times we put it off on somebody else, either be water, the state, or, you know.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah. And you'll, you'll note throughout land use law, throughout the Land Use Development and Management Act, there's like caveats that that will simply say that any of these items can be overridden if a local agency makes a determination that there is an overt impact to the health and safety of the community or language similar to that, right? So local agencies, just simply because something does have to be, you know, permitted or even a by right item, local agencies still are within their purview to look at certain things. And if they say we have legitimate findings and what we see is substantial evidence that states that these items will impact the health and safety of the community to this degree, then they they can do what they feel they need to do locally. Both to approve and deny in all honesty. But like everything else. You got, it does, it depends, and you gotta be ready to defend whatever that, whatever that decision point is. Because you are given the ability to make those decisions, but you also then have the responsibility. I feel like so much of the planning stuff like mirrors the conversations I have with my teenage sons all the time. Dad, can I do that? You can. Should you? Right? Is that, is is that going to be a good thing for you? Yeah. So yeah, I think that probably covers everything there. Permitted versus conditional, I think we already really hit on those items there. Annexation, um, do you guys have any type of activity annexation wise that you think you'd be doing?
We were worried that another county would try to annex a portion of our county.
Okay.
Then that law changed and then.
Yeah, county, county annexations, obviously, you know.
It's going to only be like a summit county, but.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there, is there, are you sure there?
It was never, we don't, I mean, the cities do the annexing, we don't. Kind of what we do, the, the only difference that we have and going back to the general plan discussion that touches on focused with land use is to really push the developments in San Juan County into the cities.
Yeah.
Or the town, because they have the infrastructure. And, but yet, in our, in our local agreement, like with Monticello and Blinding, we allow this future annexation area around the cities where we can turn the zoning to them and have applicants go to them for approval.
Even though secondly, still in the county?
Yeah, so it's like a future annexation zone on there. And so we do have that in place today by interlocal agreements that don't expire until 2028. And so we just, when we look at the general plan, it's like, well, we've got a, it kind of acknowledges that fact is we're pushing more development into the cities or around the cities because of the infrastructure that we've allowed them, you know, like if they have a transportation plan and a road network, then we'll honor that so that in the future, as they continue to grow up, then the development that we approve recognizes kind of their efforts. Instead of, you know, yeah, we don't care about Blinding City and I understand we're a block away from you. We're gonna, we're gonna approve this type of subdivision that totally messes up their transportation scheme or their infrastructure within the development. So that's, that's one of the things you'll see reflective in the general plan that we kind of need to, to address so that we, it's a, another factor of that collaboration that we have with the cities and towns.
For for years, there was two different, like annexation processes. Basically, you had one for Salt Lake County and then one for the rest of the state. Honestly, I mean, I know it's crazy, but it was in response to the annexation wars of the 90s, right? Where you had so many of the local agencies in Salt Lake County that were just trying to like grab this land before the other municipality next to us could get it, right? And then, of course, any of the feedback that Salt Lake County itself had about, well, there are certain things that we want to protect for resources and and whatnot. So that a whole different process in last year's session, that was all redlined and removed. So now there's a consistent annexation process statewide that applies to everyone, Salt Lake County included. And there is a significant amount of discussion happening through the land use task force, which is organized through the Utah League of Cities and Towns and the with partnership with the Utah Association of Counties as well. And stakeholders from throughout the state having conversations about annexation and what additional changes they think. I think a lot of the discussions they're having are getting much closer to your process. And a lot of good communication between the county and then the local agencies for there to be conversation about these annexation areas that are directly adjacent to municipalities and collaboration about infrastructure and street networks and everything there. So it's, it sounds to me like you guys are probably ahead of the curve in in all honesty compared to some, some other counties with within the state. But, uh, but yeah, I think you'll, you'll see more conversation there in 2026 and beyond. It doesn't sound like anything that's going to throw a wrench into your process, in my opinion. All right. I think that actually covers all of it, guys. We can go to the very last slide here. This is what I typically refer to just as the the jeopardy slide, kind of has some additional items that will commonly get questions on. And some of them are already covered in the, in the presentation. But if you see any there that you'd like to talk about, please let me know. I will be providing the slides, of course, to Mac, so he'll send them out. If you guys have any follow up questions, feel free to reach out at any time. I'm happy to organize any type of additional training, conversations, follow up stuff. I'll come all the way down here to you guys if wanted. I'll remote in if you guys have questions and you want to do it remote, anything of that nature. The whole point of of our office is to be there to try to assist local agencies in addressing their planning needs and their planning challenges, right? So reach out at any time. We're always happy to help.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Some of the things we talked about in commission meeting with the training that we had there was, so you, you recognize Sylvia's not here tonight. So it got to a point where we had Sylvia, so you have Commissioner Stubbs, Commissioner Mom, both attending the meeting, which for us represents a forum of the commission. But that was asked during that training as well, does it make sense to have, you know, a, a member of the commission in these meetings, even in a, in attendance? And that was one of the recommendations that I was like, well, you know, it can kind of be seen as the influential. You know, you have a commissioner here that can influence, there's been times where in the minutes, you kind of see this discussion taking place with, with the commission. And it's like, you know, it's probably just best not to have commissioners here and let the planning commission do their thing, let the commission do their thing separate. Commissioner Stubbs, you know, in all matters, she was always, I just want to learn, you know, and just like a sponge. She's just trying to learn, you know, and you love to hear the developments, things like that, because there's a much more in-depth conversation that takes place at the planning commission than it does at the commission. Typically, a commission here, you're about the approval, not necessarily about the evidentiary facts that gets you there that you guys do as a recommending body. And so that's where you kind of see in her emails, she's like, not going to be there, you know, kind of, kind of been told that not to have that influence in there. And then we did talk about, um, the county attorney being present in all the meetings as well. That was one of the things that it touched on that, you know, it's probably not a good recommendation to have the county attorney here at all times. On those items. Yeah, because in part of it, it goes back to they, and he touched on it earlier is the, the Board of Commissioners through their legislative hat sets the law. And then it's up to the planning commission to interpret the law. And then if the county attorney is here, then they give their interpretation to you to make the decision, you know, and so.
So we're being persuaded.
Yes, which has kind of been problematic in the past in certain issues. And so that was one of the things that they touched on is, okay, well, unless there is like last one, with lots, that was remanded from district court back to the administrative law judge. And the administrative law judge remanded it back to planning commission. So we have the county attorney here to, and he gave the staff report presentation, you know, based off of that remand back. And so there were certain cases like that, that that they need to be back here to present to you. But other than that, you know, having them here at all planning commission meeting, it's really up to you. I, I think the, the court weighs heavily on your discussion that's found in the minutes. And then it's up to the county attorneys to, to support that in an appeal or a court case of how you got there. But it's really, the discussion is so critical amongst yourself of why you made your findings, why, why did you come up with the decision? And so that's something that we've got to work on is having you and that deliberation that takes place in your sense. You know, that is so critical, rather than turning to the county attorney, well, what's your interpretation? It's really up to you guys as a body to interpret it on your own. I mean, you all have from your respective areas, your respective expertise, have to have that debate for the minutes. And then they, they go back and support it and they feel as in that. And so that was one of the things we talked on.
Yep.
There is also a difference between the general plan, because we got it kind of in that mobile, our general plan's illegal. It doesn't match our ordinance. Well, there is inconsistencies are allowed in your general plan because the general plan is supposed to be visionary 25 years, you know, and so ours was, uh, last update on our general plan was 2018. So it's still relatively new, you know, and kind of like you mentioned, it just kind of depends on, on the body itself is if they're a 25 year or a five year general plan. And so there's, it's okay to be inconsistent with it, but it suits you better in a court case if you're, you know, if they say, well, you're not consistent in your general plan with your ordinance. It's better to have them see an eye to eye, but it's not necessarily a requirement that they see eye to eye.
Yeah, there is no requirement in state law. That's, and that's referred to as general plan consistency state, right? So there, there are a handful of states in the nation where that is required within their, their state law. And so you can't actually do a change of zone if that's not consistent with whatever is identified for that land use within your general plan. Utah is not a general plan consistency state, but there has been discussion over the last couple of years where there are some stakeholders that feel very strongly that, that Utah needs to move to that. You know, I don't know if we'll end up seeing that in in the next session or two, but I I will say that there has certainly been stakeholders that have been saying that they feel that Utah needs to move toward that. The majority of their argument right now is based upon affordable housing, which is kind of what everybody seems to hang their, their hat for policy changes on these days. But but yeah, as, as Mac said, there's, there's no requirement for that right now, even though certainly it is a best practice and absolutely courts throughout the U S, regardless of whether you're a consistency or a non-consistency state, are going to look at consistency like that as whether or not, how how strong the type of decision that you're making is.
Just going back to the county attorney conversation, and I, I kind of like having them here, to be honest with you. We could have, you know, some of us way out here in left field and some of us way out here in right field. And I think that we can ask questions of them in real time to provide some guardrails for our conversation and you know, kind of where we should, where we should be headed that they have the expertise at. If you don't have those guardrails in real time, I can see our conversations lasting months, right? Because we might have a question, go to them, we don't get an answer back for another month, we kick it around again. I mean, I, I don't know, I think there's some value of having these.
I think during the ordinance process and the ordinance development, it makes sense.
Yeah.
But when you have a, an applicant and an application and the expectation of the planning commission is you're, you're the ones that are applying the ordinance to that application. And if the attorney is sitting here, then there's been circumstances where on that application, they turn to the attorney, you know, it's like, okay, is, is this your understanding or is this your interpretation? He gives his, there's an argument between the two. This is how I see it. I don't read it like that, you know, and it's really the, the priority and the importance, it's really on your deliberation and how you come up with that, not theirs in that moment on the application side of it.
Yeah, I, I don't like it. Like, I really don't like it. Because I think most, we're not attorneys. It's like loves. It's like the motion that we made before and Lloyd did the same motion. It's, it's how I look at that, that ordinance. This is how I read it. And then I, I explain in a long motion, I'm not an attorney, but this is my thought process. While it's not substantial enough or whatever, it can go to hell. But I would, it just seems like there's too many, I feel like either Mac, maybe Mac or Kristen or the attorney, that it's like, I'm, I'm not here to be a rubber stamp board. You know, like whatever everybody's opinion is, let's hear it, let's have it, let's discuss it. But, but I'm not here to the county, what I, I absolutely hate more than anything, and I'll give them a heads up, like the attorneys for, for against loves, they'll come in, well, you have to do this. You know what that tells me? I'm not doing anything but. You know, I just, let's have a discussion and I will give you, and everybody can do it here. But I, I just feel like it, it does, it becomes like a legalese class. If I wanted to be an attorney, I.
Would have gone to law school, yeah.
You know, but I don't. I, 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 I don't think they need to be at every meeting. I do agree, like if we're going through, you know, specific definitions of things, like it's nice to be like, oh, well, you know, whatever.
I like having them here when there's a process issue, like the question of are we turning this into a public hearing?
An administrative.
You know, all that kind.
Mine should be spelled out in the ordinance.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
To, and the ordinance dictates.
Or if, if you ever find yourself running into a consistent question about a certain item, a certain policy, a certain procedure, even a certain definition. If if you run into it more than once, that's something that through staff, you should be running through the attorney of, hey, can you give us your thoughts on this definition? Can you give us your thoughts on this policy language? To have an attorney present at, at every single planning commission meeting that that you guys have for, especially for smaller local agencies, oftentimes ends up simply creating a, a lot of onus and, and challenge, honestly, not to mention the billable hours, which can, which can be extensive.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. Follow up at any time, guys.
Hey, thanks. We'll stay out of trouble from now on.
General plan status update.
Okay, let me close this. Okay, you should be good. Our general plan says, so we talked about that general plan. I appreciate the discussion that you had earlier with the general plan and some of those potential changes. As we looked at the general plan, so I mentioned earlier that we did reach out to Serta and have Todd helping us with that. I've met with the state, so the state set up a process to help counties and cities as they go through and, and place the required legislative LUDMA items within the general plan. So we do have to go through and, and recognize that we have to have a a water utilization plan. And this makes sense when you think of, and that, and this is kind of goes back to why do we have a special service district member as a representative on the planning commission, how critical it is. When you look at overall development and the ability to development, to develop outside on the unincorporated lands. Our special service districts are given these rights to manage water systems throughout our county, whether it's Mexican Hat, Eastland. You have Spanish Valley Special Service District, all of these water districts that manage the water within their, that area. Well, if our land use plan, you know, reduces the density, so in the general plan, we, the encouragement really is to keep development in the acre sizes with, or the parcel sizes within an acre. And in Spanish Valley, all of a sudden now you've got quarter acre allowing in there. Well, if, if we can't meet the water requirements for quarter acre parcels and mass high density development, then there's really no reason to have that in our zoning because we can't meet the future water demand of the area. And so the state. And so the state is kind of requiring this water utilization plan to be developed. Throughout all counties and cities within the state, and so we do have to. To place in our general plan, you know, hey, this is, this is the process that we're gonna undertake. And that's extensive, that that um, we've got to meet with. Kind of all of the water districts altogether, Water Conservancy District is kind of who the county is. Has placed all water shares in that the county would own, and they kind of dictate and work with the irrigation companies. Throughout the county, um, so they have to work with us to develop this water utilization plan. Uh, and with that, we've got to be able to forecast growth in the county. The only area that we've really done this is in Spanish Valley, we did a um, a Spanish Valley Water Users. Uh, plan, and that kind of was for the whole Spanish Valley area, which included Moab. Grand County, Moab, um, Irrigation Company, Guissa, which is the groundwater and sewer. Um, and San Juan County, Spanish Valley Special Service District is part of that collective group. We went through a s- a study process, Sitla helped with that because Sitla will be a. A massive future user user of five thousand acres in Spanish Valley. And we had to look at that water availability for that whole valley. Um, with with the water shares, we allocated five thousand acre feet of water. Out of the San Juan River to Spanish Valley, uh, to get the water needed to create. That special service district and the infrastructure there, so part of that required us to go through and. And meet with all the users and develop this plan that kind of looks at the future growth potential of the area. And make sure that we have water availability, and if we don't, then it develops plans in there. To, you know, have another well and, you know, let's tap into this spring, and that's all kind of a futuristic model. Well, we did it there, but nowhere else in the county, so you take Eastland. Eastland, you read in the the paper today that, you know, USDA gave gave funds to the potash plant. Well, that potash plant, they they anticipate around seventy to a hundred employees just on the potash plant. Well, Eastland, you know, if they're about out of water, imagine what that's gonna do, you bring in, say you bring ten homes into their area. Well, does it place their aquifer in jeopardy and, you know, how's their aquifer doing right now? You know, are they depleting what what they're pulling out of, you know, how deep's their well, and so. Uh, the state requires this extra layer, this extra process that we go through. To make sure that you have water availability, and I think it really stems from the situation that Enix City. Uh, just outside of Cedar City, uh, what they got into where they were drawing too much of their aquifer. So they had aquifer depletion of their water, and they started to have aquifer collapse. And the state had to step in and place restrictions on there, it's like, hey, hey, you've got to get this back. Under control and conservation measures or whatever it is, so we need to develop that. And state it in the general plan so that so that recognizes that the county's gonna go through this effort. To get all of the water tried to figure it out and try to forecast in the future what our growth is gonna be and to be able to meet. A future growth pattern with water availability, and so with that, you know, you'll see just kind of a. Simple statement in the general plan, but then we've got to develop this much larger, larger system, because if not. You know, you take ten homes in Eastland, well, what does that do? You know, we had. When you think back, and I can't remember, some of you were here, some of you were not, we had a a subdivision that was being proposed. In Elk Meadows for residential, and that was, if I remember right, it's around thirty homes that. That a developer was going to come in and place in in um, Elk Meadows, and you had. Some of the concerned citizens from Elk Meadows come forward and say, hey, man, the water table is so high, what are you gonna do for your septic systems? Now, are you gonna get septic in there? Uh, and then it was, the developer wasn't planning to do any water infrastructure. His plan was, well, go to Mon- Monticello City and pull water from the city system. On one of the commissioners, so it went through here on the subdivision plot, was approved here, and when it got to commission. One of the commissioners, you know, had been talking to the citizens out there and it's like, man, what what is that? That thirty home demand from the municipality of Monticello, what does it do to affect their? Aquifer and where are they gonna come up with the water? And did you talk to Monticello City about this, you know, and and then it stopped that that whole subdivision from going through. But it's things like that that we've got to work through so that um, we kind of have that future thought process of. Okay, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna place Monticello or Dove Creek, you know, in jeopardy with their water because our developers. Are wanting to to put more homes here because the property is cheaper. We've just got to have that that built into the system, and so, so that's one of them that we've got to wrangle through. It already has um, in the general plan, uh, the agricultural protection zones, it mentions that in there already. So we're safe there, and and I think that's reflective of kind of what we've heard with the public. So literally, when I look at those three and a half pages, I think um, of the land use section, I think it's fairly easy. As we go through, you know, we still want to recognize kind of like Anne had mentioned last, or in that discussion of like, hey. Let's, we need to recognize the fact that Spanish Valley has a plan already in Spain and. And reflect that in the general plan, it's there already, uh, so it doesn't make sense to take that out because we. We recognize it when um, in the new ordinance, we recognize that fact that they have a community. A Spanish Valley Community Plan that's already been approved, and what we liked about that. When you go back into history of when that was created, they worked really hard with the planning commission. And the commission and the public to develop their community plan for Spanish Valley, and. You fast forward through time, we want to make sure that we don't lose that sense because we have made decisions. Based off of that community structure plan, um, and what, it kind of gives us a heads up of what. Sitla can do on their properties because they approved it with us. Um, and so it kind of gives us that model that we used in that wa- that water resource management plan is like. Well, Sitla's planning to do this many residential units, the difficulty when. There was a lot of public outcry on five thousand acres, like, man, don't, don't plan out your five thousand acres now, how about you just do half? And so the commission is like, okay, just do half, and Sitla was like, okay. We'll just give you that community master plan, is what I think of it in my head. That community structure plan, just for half of our properties, I would have rather had the whole kit and caboodle so that we know that there's gonna be. Five hundred homes in the area, so Lloyd, the special service district, knows, okay, where am I gonna get? Enough acre feet of water for five hundred homes and twenty-five mixed-use businesses, a church and a school and. Those type of things that are within that community structure plan, and so. Things like that, I don't, wouldn't recommend taking out, but I think if if we approach it on the the simple simplistic nature. Then I I think it's pretty accomplishable here within this next couple of months. The commission has asked um, for a meeting with you, kind of a joint meeting so that. Everybody can wrap their heads around changes to that section in the general plan, we're hoping to to have a. Uh, discussion with you this next commission meeting, so next Tuesday. Um, right now, we we have a pretty light agenda, and so. We're hoping to get it in at eleven o'clock, which kind of depends on on what the agenda is, but. Next week, yeah, so today's eleventh, so yeah, yep. So we're hoping some of you avail- be available that we can meet together. TC's like, ah, I'm a working man, and those are working hours, we will have a virtual link, you know, if that helps.
Yeah. On the sixteen, um, so. San Juan Conservation District, which I chair.
Yeah.
With DWQ that evening.
Yes, at six o'clock that night for the watershed plan.
We've hired a. A firm to go through and identify water issues and needs. In the county, so part of that is like every, they're trying to develop or manage. Or see what needs to be done with every spring.
Correct.
Services identified and and then like even like old uranium mines.
Hmm.
You know, the testing, the water quality of that's around there anyways, so if anybody wants to come.
Will be there at six o'clock.
Public comment.
Hmm.
A lot of times I feel like I'm here and the county does something, and then. On this, you know, because the conservation is a, you know, a state advisory committee really. But we're kind of based on watersheds is how they're broken up in the state.
Yeah.
That's kind of a whole nother thing, and we don't really talk very well together, I don't know why, but it just.
Different committees, different groups, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we had planned on being there, you'll see, me and I think Commissioner Mon. Are both on the watershed council, and so we'll. We'll be there.
Back to. Things that the general plan is only six years old.
Hmm.
Do we, are we out of compliance with it?
So you are because the state code requires like that water. So that water piece, it also requires that you have um, more emphasis on affordable housing. And so it's things like that that we would place into the general plan to make sure that we're covered on those required pieces from state code. When I asked there our county attorneys, I'm like, hey, is there something illegal about it? I go, no, there's really nothing other than we're missing those pieces, and so.
Well, I just can't see why we can't keep moving the.
We are, yes, a hundred percent, yes, we we have to do both at the same time, you know, and and that's. That's why I pointed out that statement is we're not a consistency state, and. It's okay that it's not consistent with the land use, but kind of going back to that discussion as we. It listed specific zones in the general plan and we're considering new zones like the um. That rural recreation zone, so it's making sure that we have language in the general plan to reflect that so that. They're consistent in nature, and so I think just simple paragraph changes in there, I don't think we need to. To break it open huge, you know, you had the committee, the local citizen group here. They had mentioned the process that they would recommend, you know, on the land use side of it. I think it'd be worthwhile to to utilize them on the general plan as well, because in it, it. In the general plan, land use section, it references the survey that was done years ago. The difficulty with that survey, when the, when the commissioners came in right after that, they're like, hey. We we weren't a part of the survey, most of the survey results came from Monticello and Blinding Citizens. On the majority side of it, yet those numbers were used, and so it wasn't really a good representation, you heard it from Shannon as he's done. His survey as he's gone out to the communities, uh, he's like, yeah, we're, you're missing those pieces, and so his efforts are really trying to get. The unincorporated citizens back in those discussions, and so. It doesn't make sense to keep those survey results in there when Kristen had mentioned, we've got these other survey results that are. That are more of the unincorporated citizens, so let's utilize that, so simple changes like that I think can be incorporated in there. Take out the old survey data and then, you know, go from there, because I think we have a better sense of. If you think about all of the community rhetoric that you've heard from from citizens, like, hey, we are an agricultural county. Well, in it, there's limited language on agriculture, and I think if we we beef that up that we are rural and that's what we are. And we want agriculture, and how are we gonna promote agriculture is through this agricultural protection zone. So we're solid there, and we just kind of add those small pieces from the citizens that we've heard through just the regular comments, and then. Use Shannon's group to push it back out to those citizens, and then he can come back and say, okay, yeah. We got this paragraph right, and so not looking at like an overhaul when. You know, there was comments, or it is, well, we need to hire a consultant to do this, I'm like, man, we've got. We've got Serta to help, they can help, the state is willing to help us on those pieces, and if we use the citizen group. Collaborate with them, utilize them as kind of the legs behind it to to go make sure we got it right, and. We should be able to get it quickly, it shouldn't be a long, long process to get the general plan up to stuff so we can continue to move forward with the land use. Side of it, land use is a little bit harder, and I think that's a discussion that's why I'm hoping that we can get you tied in with the commissioner, because. Some of the commissioners feel stuck, and we hear your comments, Lloyd mentioned it, and Melissa, I heard yours, like. Or no, it was Anne last time, she'd mentioned, can we just go back, you know, and and make it simpler, well. Yes, we can, you know, and it's, do we have to have this, this long use table? How about we narrow it with language, but if it's not on the land use table, then here's the process to add it. You know, and and create those type of systems so we reduce it, even when they look at the general plan, they're like, man, some counties, their general plan is. Simple statement, and that's it, and so we don't have to be this. Five hundred page document, I think there's ways that we can tailor it, and and still meet, capture the the overnight rental in question.
I mean, we're back to the attorneys, you know, like, well, legal went through it and like, oh.
Well, when I say legal, that's the state code requirements, and then we know our problems here at a local level, you know, the overnight rentals is in question. And so let's solve that problem so that you kind of heard him talk and and you capture that, it's like, well. It's really up to the local authority here, and the state's not gonna dictate how to do this, so we develop that process. Kind of going back to your comments is, when we considered the short-term rental, we have a policy that you haven't even seen. For short, short-term rentals, it's tied with business licenses. That will then get into, if you're a short-term rental, kind of going back to to Cory's statements. Is with short-term rental, well, we want to make sure you have fire extinguishers. We want to make sure you have CO, your carbon monoxide and your fire, um, you know, detection systems in your home. You know, say it's a nineteen thirties home, we want to make sure those things are there, and if. If you're noxious and your neighbors turn you in, we want to know who is managing the overnight rentals so that. The sheriff, if they get a a nuisance call, they know who to call and say, hey, you need to. You need to fix this, and then the process was, it kind of even went a little bit further, you get so many complaints. We can yank your your overnight rental permit from you, you know, because you're noxious in the neighborhood. And so try to get that compatibility and that health, safety and and that wellness into into the overnight rental process.
Like, we're back to like a.
Uh, overregulation. It's a regulatory thing.
Everybody acted like, I mean, that I was in favor of we're hiring it, and I'm like, absolutely friggin' not.
Yeah.
Administration wants, that's not on us.
Well, as we haven't presented that one yet. Because that one's a heartburn, but yet behind the the thoughts with that is. We have a petition from a neighborhood, you know, to the north that there was, there was over twenty people, twenty neighbors. That had signed a petition saying, stop with overnight rentals in our neighborhood because you're killing it. You know, it's like, us long-term residents, now we are impacted heavily, and we want this to stop. County, you need to fix your ordinance to stop it, and so you kind of get that where you see too much and no regulation. Um, you know, you hear stories about they're, they're driving the side-by-side down the road, or in an area with no stop signs and. They're just, kids are blowing through and they're almost causing accidents, that's the safety side of it that we're supposed to be regulating. Through our ordinances, and so, so it's kind of a dichotomy, you know, between outside of blending compared to what you're seeing in Spanish Valley. And so that's kind of, I'm hoping you you can come, I'll send you guys just the notice of when. When we can meet, I'm hoping we can get some of you there, I know some of you work maybe a little bit difficult, but. Even if it's just virtual, they they do want to have these discussions with you on on what do we do with the general plan. Um, I'll go through it and just kind of give some recommended changes, just kind of a quick. Um, yeah, that was one of the things that the commission wants to be, to see is the potentials changes to it and. Then kind of have that discussion of what do we do with the land use ordinance, do we take it back to the twenty eleven? We had started on the twenty twenty-five from the twenty twenty-two recommended changes, and so it's. It's gotten so far from where we were, and you're hearing from the public is like, this is just too much, and so. So let's take a look at. And you're hearing from the public is like, this is just too much. And so, so let's take a look at, maybe do we go back to the twenty eleven and start back from there and just go simple and have these statements instead of a five-page use table. It's like, well, let's go back to what we commonly see and, you know, try not to anticipate these data centers coming into San Onon County. But if they do want to come in, let's create a process that's simple and come before the planning commission for it to be in allowed use. You see that in the highway district. That's why I love skating back to you.
I agree with simple, but I also tell people, we're not just replacing the twenty eleven, we're also replacing the Spanish Valley.
Yes, yeah.
There and say, well, here's the twenty eleven and here's the new one. Right, that's not a fair comparison.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Cause, cause yeah, that one in Spanish Valley is.
Throw the Spanish Valley in there and then we'll.
Yeah.
So the Spanish Valley one on the garbage.
Yes.
Which is sliding on this, you're looking at the sign.
Yeah.
Okay. So those are just kind of the things we'll incorporate what the state requires us to have in there, the affordable housing component, the, that water utilization component in there. Um, then just try to, try to keep it simple.
Okay, sign permit.
Okay, so I have number four. This one is, this one is interesting. So as I went through and I Google Earth, the, the address on the application, it took me on the other side of the, this, yeah, Pat Creek.
It's in commercial.
When we looked at it today and the, I reached out to the applicant in an email a couple of days ago. I'm like, hey, this is what I'm seeing or is, am I seeing it right? Um, we had, um, Corey go out today and take pictures on the address just to make sure. And they are in the, um, in that highway district, not the residential. In the residential, it would not be allowed, what they were proposing. But in that highway commercial district, they are. Um, so as I went through and I provided you the ordinance so that you can kind of see, you see in their, their application, what they're wanting to do. Um, you just kind of see that, the size of the sign. So the. Well, what's when I look at page thirteen, twelve and thirteen is where I'm at. So on the bottom, you'll see the page numbers. And so you see their sign, um, the hundred forty-eight inches by forty-six inches. So twelve foot by three feet, just over twelve feet, just over three feet on there. Then you kind of see with the placement, uh, of the sign and the sign itself. If you note on the sign, um, it, they've kind of spelled out on the, the dimensions of the sign. You've got this three and a half inch return. And then you've got this wall, that wall pack and then the connection. And so, so when you, when you get further in to the ordinance itself, it is not, it is not extending out past that three and a half inches. Um, and that, and that's, that one's important to note. So chapter eight, when, when you look at the sign ordinance itself, um, under the permitted sign illumination, so you do have the LED lights behind the face of the sign. Um, and so it is one of those that is lighted internally or backlit, has lights in the back of that illuminating out. In here, and then this is going back to, to Lloyd's comments of this, this ordinance really doesn't work very well. They're supposed to tell us the lumens per fixture. Um, when you get into lumens for, per fixture, you would technically rely on the sign company to give you that, the lumens side of it. And then it gets further in chapter eight on kind of the dark sky. It's got a table in there with your voltage and lumens. So you can kind of figure out the brightness of the signs. However, when you go to, my, my thoughts are going to be kind of all crazy over the place here as I looked at this. When you go to what is required on the application in chapter nine, none of, none of the requirements of the application tells them that they have to spell out what their lumens are and their broadcast of light, things like that. So there's inconsistencies with it. Now you remember back to the, to the training that you just received, that goes to court and so you deny on, well, your sign's fifty thousand lumens, um, and not forty thousand. And yet we don't require the applicant to give us that information. Then the judge is typically going to, going to weigh in heavily there on the applicant itself. And so I just kind of discredit that portion of the, of the ordinance in here. Um, in chapter nine, so I'm looking at, um, I'm now clear up to, to page twenty-nine on your printout, which is chapter nine is on page sixty in the ordinance. It gives you awesome definitions and I used the definition when you look at, um, oh, there was one, sign, sign preclusion. Let me see. Projecting, sign projecting is defined on here, you know, twenty-four inches beyond the wall of the structure. Um, they're three and a half inches, so they're not projecting out. So they don't, don't mean that. But the, the ordinance breaks it down by um, each of the districts within Spanish Valley and I like that. And so I, I looked through here just to try to figure out. There's on page sixty-six, it starts to get into whether or not you're allowed within that zone. I'm looking at the highway commercial. On sixty-seven, it gets into, so I'm looking at paragraph B. Those are for residential developments. This is commercial. And so I've flipped over to, um, to page sixty-eight to where you have non-residential, residential developments. And this is the standard I applied for the sign. Um, so when you look at, um, some of the regulations in here, signs located within five hundred feet, uh, I measured the distance from the building to the, to the highway. It doesn't tell you what, where, where you start and where you end on the US one ninety-one. Um, but it kind of gives that five hundred feet. This building is, um, further than that five hundred feet. Um, it's not a freestanding sign. When I, I looked for the definitions of, okay, what would this sign qualify and be defined as? Um, there's really not a definition for wall signs. But on page sixty-nine, there is wall signs. So I applied, it's as a wall sign. It's not freestanding, which is typically on a pedestal and or a post up in the air. That's, that's a freestanding sign. This is a wall sign on a building. Um, and so that's kind of how I attached it. Even though there's not a definition, this is the standard that I took it to. This is attached or painted with a projection of less than twenty-four inches, which it is. It's not projecting out twenty-four inches. It's three and a half. Shall be permitted, provided that the area of any such sign shall not exceed twenty percent of the face of the front wall. So where you look and they highlighted where the sign's going to be, twelve feet, the building is measured at a hundred foot. Um, and so it's, it's less than that. It doesn't exceed the twenty percent on there where it's only twelve feet wide. Um, and so we're fine there. Um, it's no more ten, than ten percent of the face of the side or rear. That didn't apply. Um, so kind of the, the summary, when I look at this special standards on here, um, you know, about five hundred foot, they're nine hundred and seventy-six feet back from the highway.
Five hundred feet from US highway nineteen.
A nineteen, yeah. Well, it is, it's some of the numbers in here. You know, if you look at size, monument or low pole, profile pole shall be limited in size to seventy-five feet. But yet it says fifty in the paragraph, in the parentheses. So yeah, that's, that's why we need to get out of the Spanish Valley one.
Yeah, but as a general principle, signs should, should be no higher than the adjacent building for which it is advertising.
Yeah, yeah.
Along US one ninety-one, the sign may be taller than the adjacent building in order to provide better.
So it totally conflicts each other out.
Cause you've got a design standard for commercial signs.
Mm-hmm.
Which steps you out of everything else.
Yes.
Doesn't say anything about a fix to a building. It just, all it says about a building is that it can be taller than the building if it's on the highway.
Yeah, yeah. The only other one that I really found that's applicable on here is sign cutter. I looked at the sign color. Um, it mentioned on here, the face of the colors to the adjacent building. All these buildings are white. Um, but it includes the earth tones, including black browns and grays. And so if you look at the sign, they're, they're wanting to have a gray sign with a blue lettering. And so to me, it was all applicable. Um, I could not find any reason that in the ordinance that would tell us, no, it wouldn't be allowed.
Right.
Other than this lumen issue, but on the application, it doesn't require them to give us that.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the sign based on that I like it.
Second it. I'll second that.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
That is simple language by a simple person. There's no legalese there. So when they sue them, they can come back and I'll tell them what I really meant.
Corey, you got a lot of commercial, uh, uh, solar, I mean, what it's like.
What, what's all these, uh, Danny and Mary Key on Lydia subdivision?
That must be a contractor.
I have no clue.
Cause they don't own the property and they don't do solar.
So our property, we're working, and I was talking back earlier about this, we're working on our property record right now.
Uh-huh.
We just barely got I-works in the last two months to start pinning the locations. But we got a long way with our GIS and data.
It's kind of funny because it's what, four different addresses on there. And Lydia?
Oh, okay. No, I, I, okay. So back up. I didn't know what this is. Um, if Danny Key's parcel over there by the airport. So Danny Key had a parcel, but the parcel was still like three acres. But it was actually subdivided, but our records don't show that. So they all show the same thing. They all show the Danny Keys. But they're actually the same building, Royal College, doing regal.
Uh-huh.
Me and Regal were doing four houses in there.
They didn't, they, they were, uh, Mike Bynum, not Danny Key. They were Mike Bynum, not Danny Key.
In what year circle?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the owner?
Mike Bynum was, yeah.
For some reason, our record showed Danny Key.
That's funny, cause.
So, so that's something I want to get with you on that and kind of see where our, our rec, our, our GIS and our data records, they lie here.
Right.
So for some reason, when it comes up, it actually comes up, I don't know, in Europe or.
Right.
But it comes up with Danny Key. There's, there's one thing that I'm trying to do is that I'm working on trying to attach everything to.
And this is.
Yeah.
Everything's attached to that. Like, yeah.
To one.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
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 Yeah. So, so, so that's where the, so it just, it's, our record, we get, I probably get five to seven complaints a month on that. And I did not tell him, he was like, game tight, know that it's really community rebuilds.
Right, yeah.
But we're trying to pin it down to location. So something in the future will not get fixed, it will automatically update.
Right.
But those four, those four solar ones are community rebuilds.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay. No, you're good. Uh, the other question I had, um, are we fining TNT real estate over a construction without a permit? Says shower was added at TNT Real Estate Investment LLC eleven nine twenty South Highway. Construction without a permit.
What happened on that was, um, we did not, and we didn't want, I didn't want to trigger that. When I went out there for a business license inspection, I talked to the owner, but it was, the vanilla shell was done. They hired licensed contractors and the owner's like, this is what we did is we hired licensed contractors to do this. And those licensed contractors got, you know who they are, but they got a compassion. Um, we still, and we still need to fix the fees at some point, but what was like a three hundred, it's done for me. Or something like that. So what we did was we took the statement from the owner and the owner's like, I did this right, I did this right, I did this right. So we did not want to penalize the rest of it on it at the end of the day. We, we waived it. They, they were really good. It, it's kind of like, it's similar to when I'm driving around town. And I see a roof going on. I stop them like, hey, you guys know you need a roof permit? And they're like, oh, we didn't hold back. Hey, if you get in there today and you guys work with us, we're not going to fine you. If you guys want to be jerks or have your attorneys involved, who want to stop you, then we're going to put the fine without, without my say.
Right.
By more education.
Mm-hmm.
Is if they're, if they're caught and then they just ignore us, then it's going to double the fee. Because our attorney's getting involved, administration's getting involved. But I've always tried to look at it from a standpoint is if they get caught and, and they answer certain questions correctly, yes, we did hire electrician, check. And I called the electrician and go, hey, why didn't you get a permit on this? I'm like, oh, we thought they wanted to commit on that.
Right.
It, it is a little bit judgmental or it is a little bit of discretion, but it's more.
Completely accessible.
People. I don't want to say liking us, but doing the right thing, education. Now, if we come across that particular plumber again, there will be a fine and there will be a dollar.
Gotcha.
Unless you say otherwise.
Mm-hmm.
Unless you're like, oh, we want to go hard on it. But we're, I'm just trying to get a consistency right now. There are a lot of work on San Onon County without permits.
Yep.
Try and see the count. The count, I think this month was twenty-one permits. Last month it was eight permits.
We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion too.
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed?
Hell no.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
See you.
Hey.
See you next week. Oh, oh, next month. I'm, I'm going to have to zoom in.
I called you on that, didn't I? That's off the state.
I'll see you by patients. Okay, I'll see you later.
The fire suppression.
Okay, thank you. We can go back. Thank you, fire sprinklers.
Yeah.
This is how I look at it.
You are wrong. I just proved it to you. Has he turned in the nightly rental?
So here's, here's.
Yes.
Cause I chat GPT too, just like you chat GPT.
Uh-huh.
It's a loaded question. I don't care which way it's going.
And no word.
As long as it's consistent.
Right.
So you have a whole.
So, so, so a, a plumber design fire suppression does not make it commercial. And unless it is commercial.
See you.
Hey.
See you, buddy. I was noticing that finger.
Oh, I know. It's the second time. It almost grew back and I caught it again.
Well, two hours had to be.
And I would agree with you.
Two hours.
Like you're saying, the twenty-nine oh four is not called for. It's not an IBC system because of the thirteen D.
Right, right, because.
A thirteen D or thirteen R.
Did you? Right.
Okay, here's the question I have though.
Uh-huh.
Hey, let's get rid of the fire sprinklers. Let's just go air me the beach. Let's, let's do two different things.
Okay.
Single family.
But the problem with that is, is there isn't a difference. Because I can take my house tomorrow, turn into a nightly rental if I'm in the right or in the right zoning. Then two months from then, I can go back to here. That's the way, that's why the state's calling it a gray area. Because it, it can be used as a primary residence and it can be switched to a nightly rental for a month or two. Um, yeah, uh, Cole used to do that.